...August fourteenth, oh nine budget review meeting. Amber, could you do a roll call, please? September fourteenth, excuse me.
Wah?
Here.
Martinson?
Here.
Quaker?
Here.
Costello?
Here.
Lecrae?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Olson? Wyffenbach?
Here.
Rogen? Hadcock? We have a quorum.
Thank you, Amber. I'd like to take a little moment of privilege. I've got a box, something I found in my box, the United Way Campaign for Giving. I'm going to pass out the pledge forms if any of the council members are interested in in filling out the pledge form and turn it in. Please fill it out and hand it back to me at the end of the night, if you could, please, or whenever you have time. To start out, at the last council meeting, it was requested that we hold another meeting and at the council's request, we set up a meeting. The reason was is for discussion of CPI. I'll do a little review of what we went over at our last council meeting. On the August thirty-first meeting, the CPI was approved to be placed in an undesignated fund account. And on September first meeting, the council was in favor of doing, the sense that I got was the council was in favor of doing supplemental appropriations later in the year, once they see where the sales tax returns were. And that's where we kind of left off at. And so tonight's pretty much, I guess what I'll do is I'll just open it up to see what people want to put on the list for discussion to start out with. I want to develop a list of things that we need to discuss tonight. I'll recognize alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss this, downtown Rapid City economic development. I would also like to discuss mayor council travel expenses. And I'm assuming that CPI is already on the list.
And so I got downtown economic development review and the mayor council travel budget and discussion for CPI. Does anybody else have anything else they want to add for discussion? I'll recognize alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just the year-to-date totals.
Oh, sales tax? Is that what you're? Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add to the list for discussion tonight? I'll recognize alderman Aaron Costello.
Thanks. Lloyd, we have the opportunity to add more later if an idea or something comes up.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I guess I'd personally like to add to the list the Humane Society. And detox. Hearing nothing else, I guess we'll start off with where we started with Sam's, what he wanted on the list, and that would be the downtown Rapid City Economic Development report. Is there anybody here to present that? To talk about it? I don't know. I'll recognize alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I called John Brewer, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. I think I got a request from Ron Wyffenbach to get some sort of audit or something. And I called and just asked if they deliver it. And at that time, I didn't ask that they show up for the next meeting. I just asked if they could deliver the audit. That's what Ron had asked, so.
Okay. So the audit was delivered. I'll recognize alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I recognize that there isn't anyone here able to answer the question. And I, and that's okay. I don't know that we necessarily need the answer tonight. But I would like to have a breakdown of how the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty-four dollars in salaries is broken down. I'm not aware that they have more than one or two employees. And I think that that's very important for us to know.
I'll recognize Mayor Allen Hanks.
Thank you. I'm sure we can get that information, but it is a reminder that Destination Rapid City committed that absolutely none of the city's tax dollars would be used for funding any salary. My understanding is, and we can verify this, all the salaries expense are actually being paid for through private donations. Isn't that correct, Malcolm? So the other thing that looks like, I think, I know that Aaron Costello had asked for sort of a breakdown as far as how the money was being spent, and I think that's actually in here, Aaron. I think that's what that page is. Okay. Thank you.
I do see that in here. Is it in here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the salary breakdown is in?
No, the breakdown of what uses of the hundred thousand dollars is used for.
Okay.
That the city gives.
Well, I, if I could, Mr. Chair.
I'll recognize Mr. Quaker.
I think that the issue of salaries is still relevant because if, because, you know, although our, although our funds are not going directly to fund salaries, we know that if this organization is also heavily dependent on donor funds and a disproportionate amount is being used for salaries, then, then, you know, it can create issues down the line with the organization, especially if, if down the line, salaries no longer are funded. So there's, there would still be less overall available. And I would just like to have a breakdown of that one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty-four dollars and who's making what. I think that's a fair, fair request.
Mr. Quaker, would the email be in line with an answer?
Yeah, that's fine. I just think it needs to be available publicly at second meeting.
Okay.
Or at our next meeting.
Okay. So I, does anybody else have any questions on the downtown Rapid City economic development? I don't know if we need a motion for that or not. All right, thank you. Second on our list is mayor council travel budget. And that was added by alderman Quaker, so I'll recognize alderman Quaker again.
Thank you. A few years ago, this was discussed in relation to where the expenses were coming out of in terms of the mayor's vehicle. And I think it's an opportunity to address it this year. I think it's a minor, really a minor change that allows for more transparency and a better, better accounting of the processes. And I think it makes sense to remove the approximately forty-seven hundred dollars from the police department budget and have the, and have the vehicle maintenance and expenses coming out of the new line item forty-two seventy-three. And I think, so I'm asking that we take that amount of forty-seven hundred dollars from the police department budget and reallocate it to line item forty-two seventy-three, which is the mayor, the mayor's travel. So I'm going to offer that as a motion for discussion.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to move the forty-seven hundred dollars from the police budget to line item, was it forty-seven thirty-three?
No, forty, forty-two seventy-three.
That's right.
So that would bring the new total of forty-two seventy-three from eight thousand to twelve thousand seven hundred.
Go ahead.
So motion's been made and seconded to take the forty-seven hundred from the police budget, moved over to forty-two seventy-three to take that forty-seven hundred out of that line item, right?
Right. The bottom line is the vehicle expenses should come out of the mayor council cost center and not the police department cost center.
And there was a second to that. Further discussion? I'll recognize vice president Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curious, if we do that, I mean, I'm not sure what, what's, what are we gaining by just moving that over there? I understand if you want it to come out of the mayor's, or the mayor council cost center, but I think what you've just done is moved it under travel and education. Is that correct? I think that line item is travel and education where I think, no?
It's travel mayor's office. It's row eighty-five, line item forty-two seventy-three. It has eight thousand dollars in it now.
But that's travel and training, that you're moving that forty-seven hundred dollars to. So how is that, my question is, how is that vehicle travel and training? Or are you saying create a new line item?
Well, we could. I mean, I just put in their, the mayor has added a new line item called mayor's office travel, and that's eight thousand dollars. So I think it makes it easy just to add that forty-seven hundred into that, our new total of twelve seven, and just have the vehicle expenses come out of that, come out of that line item. If we, if you want, we could create a new one. I don't know if that's necessary.
Well, one of the things that we started, though, I mean, you said something about transparency, and I don't know how that becomes transparent. If you're going to tuck a vehicle somewhere into travel and training, that doesn't become transparent. You look at that line item now, it says twelve thousand dollars, or whatever you add that amount to it, it looks as if that cost center for travel and training is now twelve thousand dollars, when in actuality it's still eight. And forty-seven hundred is for vehicles, so what's transparent about that?
You bring up a good point. Maybe a substitute would be in order to add, make a new number there.
I'm going to recognize Mayor Allen Hanks.
I think maybe the appropriate place, if you actually look at line item forty-two sixty in every one of the budgets, that's actually talking about supplies and materials. And there's also line item forty-two sixty-two, which is gasoline and fuel, and also tires underneath that, miscellaneous. That's probably the appropriate place to place it. Yeah, well, under the subcat forty-two sixty, and there again gasoline and oil and fuel is under forty-two sixty-two, and then tires is forty-two sixty-seven, and then miscellaneous supplies, materials. I mean, we can just plug it in there. I'll turn to the city finance office.
Yep.
I just hate making additional line items, because if you make one additional line item, it actually creates an additional line item for every single budget throughout the city's process.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing it up, because that, it shouldn't be under travel. It should be broken out. The big one there is forty-two fifty-one, which would be the repair of rolling stock. And well, probably the biggest would be the gasoline portion of it, and then repair of rolling stock would be also large. And then, like the mayor said, there's some tires and some other things. So we could take that and break it out, I guess. We'd have probably talked to Chief Alner and see, see how it was originally broken out, but we could probably do that.
I got a question, Jim. Why is it now presently under, what's the reasoning behind it being underneath the police budget?
Well, it has been there, and I've been here almost fourteen years. It's always been budgeted under there, because it is actually a police vehicle comes in there, the mayor, all mayors have used it for two or three years, and then gone back into the police department and then another vehicle fits provided. It's, nothing was done special for Mayor Hanks, this is just how it's always been that way.
Well, I, I guess that was my question is, did you have a question?
No.
Is the reasoning behind it? And with the motion on the floor, did you want to?
Will you allow me? Go ahead, Mayor.
I recognize Mayor Allen Hanks.
Thank you. I think part of the rationale is as far as having it under the police department is the fact that there's also equipment in there, the police department, as far as radios and everything else, and it makes it somewhat difficult to be working in different categories. That's, you know, there again, it's always been a police vehicle. It's considered undercover vehicle that they use, and there are radios and other equipment inside that. And, you know, it's the way it's always been.
I guess that was part of my question, because I know you have the scanner in there, and they do the maintenance on it and so forth, but that was part of the reason why, if it goes back into stock. But I think Sam was thinking about this. Did you have an alternate motion?
What I'd like to do with the seconders permission is, is I would like to amend, amend my motion to, instead of putting that under forty-two seventy-three, to ask that the finance officer bring forward a recommendation on divvying that up between cost centers forty-two fifty and forty-two sixty in their subset cost centers.
It's okay with the seconder? And Jim, did you understand what they want to do?
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to request the finance officer to put it into, find another cost center to put it in?
Or cost centers?
Might, our cost centers might have to split it up and bring it forward. Her line items, yeah, yeah. All right. Motion on the floor, motions been made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next on our, next on our list is discussion on the CPI. Does anybody want to? I'll recognize alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Lepoy. I'd like to make the motion to remove the CPI from the budget.
Say it.
Motion's been made by alderman Wyffenbach and seconded by Mr. Quaker to remove the CPI from the budget. Any discussion? I'll recognize alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of things. I've been looking at the year-to-date, and it seems like some of the numbers, if you look at them, and that's the next discussion anyway, building permits are like, like less than half, liquor license five hundred thousand, year-to-date zero. So right there, there's a shortfall of five hundred thousand in liquor licenses as to date, and building permits are less than half, which is eight hundred, so what is it? Seven, eight, four hundred thousand short, that's nine hundred thousand. Why I'm saying this is, if you look at the bottom line right now, total sources of funding and total cost of operations, you have thirty-four million dollars, and our budgeted is fifty million zero four zero. Where do we make up the sixteen million that we're short? By chance, finance ops?
I recognize finance officer Jim Preston.
I guess the question is, where do we come up with the difference? Obviously, we still have, you know, five months' worth of revenue to come in. One of the big ones is our property tax will come in in November, because we get paid twice for our property tax. That's approximately six million dollars there. We also have some sales tax. This is on a cash basis, just so when you look at it, you can keep that in mind. And we haven't got a lot of the summer retail in there yet, so we're not going to be looking at sixteen million. You know, again, you can look at this and see what you have to make up, but it's not going to be sixteen million dollars we'll be short. It's just where we're at right now.
Thank you, Jim.
And you have the estimated for building permits at one million six hundred and seventy-one, and we're at eight hundred thousand right now. And pretty soon, we come into the winter moods. That's a big shortfall. Right now, on restaurant liquor license, we're about five hundred thousand short. And we've got four months to make that up, and we have none year-to-date. So what's that? Nine, fourteen, one million four hundred dollars, just for those two items? Again, could you tell me where we get the, if we have shortfalls in these that we do not have on the undesignated cash? Where do we get the money from if we're, don't have enough undesignated cash for two thousand nine, which is one million seven hundred and twenty dollars?
I recognize finance officer Jim Preston.
Part of it is, we most likely won't spend all of our estimated budget, which was typically we do every year. And secondly, if everything holds the same, if everything holds like you say, and we have to, would come up, would need additional, like one point seven or whatever it looks like, that would have to come from our reserve, and that's why we have a reserve. We have six and a half million dollars in reserve. But if, I think your question is, if this would hold true, and we come to the end of the year, and we're short, which appears like three point six, and we were projecting one point seven, then that, that additional would have come from reserve. Again, I don't think we'll have to go there, but that's the bottom line, Ms. Hadcock.
And we never had to go into reserves at this point? Since, when's the last time we tipped into the reserves?
Give me a second.
Mr. Preston?
I'm just going to go off the top of my head. I don't recall having to go into the reserve. It seems like we've always been able to maintain that. We'd have to do some research and see if we have dipped into it here, I assume, the last five years. Mayor Shaken, who said like he doesn't recall ever going back into it, but.
So basically, if, without the CPI, we'd have one million seven hundred and twenty thousand, and with the CPI, we have two point one, basically.
Okay, say that again, please.
Can you tell me what we'd have if we didn't take the CPI for undesignated cash?
If we would.
Yes.
Oh, no, CPI, we've already taken for the two thousand nine.
I'm sorry, two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
You're right.
If we took it, our undesignated cash would be one point nine, and if we did not, give me a second. If we do not take it, the undesignated cash, we'd have to reserve, use, again, assuming everything is, stays the way we're projecting, would be two point two seven three.
We've never been short yet. I guess my point is here, kind of on the same page with Wyffenbach and Quaker here. We have county going up in taxes. We have schools that's going to need to go up in taxes. We had contributions that went up for water, sewer, and garbage, and now we're going to add to cities another eleven or fourteen dollars that people don't think makes a difference. I think it makes a big difference. I think when you start raising county school and the contributions for water, sewer, and garbage, that's a big total. I always hear it's eleven dollars, I always hear it's fourteen dollars. And I'm going to tell you, at this point, it seems like if government does not need to grow, in a sense, and we have enough reserves, and we've never tapped into our reserves, why would we put undesignated cash higher at four hundred thousand if we have enough on a zero-growth budget to pay for what we have? If it's been done in the past with what we had, and we didn't have to take the three sixty-nine unless we had a wish list, which we are not taking a wish, or let's not call it the wish list, let's call it things we need to add. Then why are we taking the three sixty-nine? And if someone can explain why at this point, and telling me that this doesn't hurt, if the school, you already know is going to have to raise their taxes, the county already said they're raising the taxes, the city, we're saying that past years, we had, we didn't have to get in the reserves, and it's three sixty-nine, if we don't do supposedly this extra stuff, are we going to hurt ourselves? By helping out with that eleven or fourteen dollars? Again, add what the county adds, add what the school adds, add the contributions for water, sewer, and garbage, and tell me if that doesn't make a difference for the people of Rapid City of taking a CPI? I can tell you, many have talked to me about this, and it's not just the eleven or the fourteen dollars. It's the total in which everybody is adding to their tax base this year. And I guess, at this point, I guess where I'm going is, I'm not in favor of taking the CPI after adding these totals, listen to the finance officer, and seeing what the projections have been at least since two thousand seven. And if you look at those, like I said, some of the things are down. I was told that those things could be made up. If we can make up one point two million, how come we can't make up four hundred thousand? That's all I got to say.
Ms. Hadcock, any further discussion? I'll recognize alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Lepoy. And I think that, I'm not sure that, I'm going to read the council's mission statement here from, since I've been on the council, I've tagged this on my notebook, and I bring it with me every time. And one of the reasons I'm, I'm, have kept making the motion to remove the CPI is for the simple reason that if it's there, it gets spent. There's, there's, the last two years, we've been presented budgets without including the CPI, but yet the council has chosen to take the CPI. And our mission statement, I'll read it right off the, what I got off the website. The mission of the Rapid City Council is to provide a cost-effective public administration that ensures public trust, provides an open forum, fosters a climate of free enterprise for all people, and enhances quality of life. One of the things that I, I think that is necessary for our council in a time of cyclical change, that times go up and tons go down, but it seemed, looking back on the history of this, of this budget, it continually goes up, it never comes down. I think there's room to not take the CPI and be perfectly fine, and send a message to our constituents and the people in Rapid City that we understand and we are behind, and living up to our mission of trying to do the best we possibly can in bringing the cost-effective government to them. And I think that by adding revenue that is not necessary, it lends itself to creating and growing a government that is not necessary. I believe that if, if we were all willing and had the opportunity to roll up our sleeves, we could, we could meet any goal that was put in forward if this budget even was slashed even farther. So I'm going to support as a motion that I made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyffenbach. Motion's been made, seconded, and discussion. I recognize alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim, I have a question for you. What is the, what is the absolute deadline for letting the county know that the city wants, would want to take the CPI?
We need to, we need to have our levy request by October first. To the county auditor.
Okay, so it's not something that could be removed and then considered right before the end of the year? We'd have, we really have to decide?
We have to do it by the first of October.
Okay. I appreciate the comments that have been made, and I, I think that there are a lot of people in Rapid City sitting around their kitchen, kitchen tables, asking the same question that the city's asking, and that is, is how do we pay the bills? I think the answer is easier for us than it is for them. I think that this, this is a great opportunity for us to remove the CPI increase for this year. I want to remind the council that a few weeks ago, we were given an impact statement on what it would mean to the city over time in terms of compounded loss if we didn't take the CPI. And I also want to remind everyone that there is a compounded loss to our constituents if we do take the CPI. So I think there is an opportunity for savings. I do not think we need to take the CPI this year. We should not increase property taxes at this time. The timing. The timing could not be worse to increase property taxes. I think the budget that has been presented, while it has some flaws, it does not include the, the CPI, we should not add it, and we should go ahead and remove it, and we should remove it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quaker. Next, I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I've been on the Council, I've been an advocate for taking the CPI, because I understand compounded over a period of time, that loss of, that, of CPI will impact us due to inflation. So I've always said, let's take the CPI. I understand what everyone is saying around the table, and how hard it is today to meet fiscal responsibilities for individual families and individuals and cities across the country. The National League of Cities, as they do every year, did a survey of financial, finance officers across the country, and those that responded, eighty-eight percent of the cities would find it harder to meet their financial obligations for next year, for this year and next year. So I understand that we are in extraordinary times, and this has been going on for about a year. Having said all that, I understand what everyone is saying, and I'm gonna advocate still for taking the CPI. And I think that these are extraordinary times, and they are creative times. And I think that maybe we're just looking at this either or, as take it or not take it. I'm gonna throw an idea out on the table, and I'm not sure if it's feasible, if it's doable, but it's an idea to try to move the process along. The Finance Office has always said that if we don't take the CPI over a period of time, it's a loss of money. So take the CPI, we don't lose that base that would increment next year. What would then be wrong with, if we don't need the CPI, to give that money back to those property owners in the form of rebates? I don't know if we've ever done that, but these are extraordinary times, why can't we think outside of the box and think like extraordinary times would demand, and say, let's still take it and do what the Finance Office is recommending? We don't hurt the base, we still have that increment for next year to run off of, and then at the same time, we don't need the money, give that money back in the form of rebates. I understand, I, I, I'm a thinking person. Administratively, I can feel the daggers coming from our Finance Office, because that's a lot of work for them to do, to be able to then come up with a list of people and property owners and all, and how to do that. I, I don't discount that, I understand that. But I think if someone took the hit this year, that maybe internally, the city could absorb that hit, and it's easy for me to say, working more hours, doing more things, I understand all of that, but at the same time, I think we need to think a little bit more creatively than we are, just by saying, and pitting ourselves against each other to say, take it or don't take it. It's an idea, I'm not gonna make a motion, but it's an idea that I think that we can talk about. There would be a lot of work in terms of somehow structuring that, somehow getting people to come in to get their property tax rebate from the city, or sending it out. I, I'm not even sure how all of that could work yet, but here we are sitting around the table, pretty talented people, I think we could figure that out. So, just another thought in terms of taking the CPI, helping us out, and at the same time, helping out the citizens of the community. So it's just an idea that I throw out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Any further discussion, I'll recognize Alderman and Deb Hagcock.
Just a couple of things. Thinking creatively is a good thing, and I think what you have thrown out there is, is something to be thought about, Mr. Chapman, but the mayor has set forth a zero-growth budget with no CPI. To me, that sends a message to us as a city council as well. That stuff was sent to us for suggestions that we should take it, in a sense, and do these things with it. But he also didn't put it in his budget, and he didn't say he wanted to put it in his budget, he just gave us a, you know, you could take it if you want, this is my suggestion. So why don't we take his suggestion with the zero-growth budget and not take the CPI? Because what was thrown out there is things that aren't have-tos. Those are things that we don't need at this point. And in his budget, I keep telling you, when I said there was gonna be short, they said they could find that money, and that we've always had money to operate as a city. Then I looked at the past, again, and I'll say it again, it says right here in the past that we did just fine. And if you take away 300,000 in any of those, did it hurt the city? Did it hurt anybody? And now they say on CPI, if you don't take it, it hurt our tax base. So next year, instead of 12 million, whatever, it will be 11 million something, and because of inflation, we'll be missing out on 400,000 for one year. Well, they say that it compounds. Well, it compounds when we just missed that first set. Are we really gonna hurt ourselves or the taxpayers by not taking 3% for one year? I mean, be creative. If you wanna be creative, see what happens when we don't. See, be creative, if you have a budget, and you have to set forth that budget, and that's all you get to spend, you'll stay between your means, or in your means. But I think if you have more, you'll always find something to spend it on. And we seem to do that well in government, and I feel at this point, why not be creative? Put it in a sense that makes sense to the taxpayers as well as ourselves. Have we never not taken it? No. Have we ever, we haven't, on contributions for water, sewer, and garbage, we haven't raised for 16 years. That's a big, big increase for people. City, I think, got what they needed in order to get what we wanted, what was a 140 million dollar project. Plus, we're gonna take 3% in property taxes. The school's coming up with taxes, and so is the county. Let's be creative, again. This is a time for city to, to not have to take it. It makes sense. Again, everybody else has a budget, the city needs to set forth theirs and stay with it. I've been here four years, and I can tell you, we've never done lots of have-tos. Some of the things we do, I, I know are quality of life and things that are good, but let's try it without doing everything we want and make priority lists. That's creative.
Ms. Hagcock, I'll recognize Alderman and Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think being creative is not saying but. When, I think when you say the word but, you discount and invalidate everything before the but, which was everything that I said. And I disagree. I mean, I think that we can say, and what I'm trying to get to, is not a but, but an and, that we can do the CPI, not worry at all about hurting the, the property tax bases, I said, and help the citizens. I don't think anything that I said about still distributing rebates, in terms of what that CPI would mean per property owner in the city, I don't think anything about that other than the internal work that the city would have to do. I don't see at all how that then hurts the, the citizens in our community. I don't see how the city is then spending that money. We're not allocating that money toward projects or programs. That money is going right back to the same people that it would have been levied toward. So I would hope that, I'm, I'm trying to think outside of the box, I'm trying to do what I think is, in the best long-term interest of the city in terms of financially, but at the same time, not hurt taxpayers at all today, because I too understand that people are hurting, and it is extraordinary times. So at some point, I hope that people will, can talk on the merits of that, that that makes no sense whatsoever, and it would be a nightmare administratively, and we just can't internally do that, or that Jason would say, nope, statute says, no, you can't do anything like that. I'm fine with that. But I'm trying to get to a point where we're doing what's best by everybody, based on that mission statement that Ron read. Low-cost, cost-effective government. One other comment that I'll make is, and I too have some concerns, that in this, in this, the 2009 budget was a half million dollars for the sale of a liquor license. I, I don't think that's gonna happen in this economic times, but if you look at this budget, any of these budgets, line item by line item in a vacuum, they don't work. There's gonna be some that are, that won't meet 100%, but if you look at it in its totality, that, there will be something else that'll be 200% above. So I think overall, that will balance out, and I feel comfortable that that will happen. So again, I threw the idea on the table, if it goes nowhere, that's fine, but again, I'm trying to be creative and get to an and state instead of a but state.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Ron, before, I, I gotta comment before, I'll turn to you. I guess, everybody's got a valid point. I mean, I, I very much understand what Ms. Hagcock's talking about, and Mr. Wyfenbach and Sam, but you know what, one of the things Mr. Kroger taught me when I first got on the, on the Council, is when you add up the police and safety and the fire departments' budgets, and you, and you figure out what we get for property tax, we're short of about 8.3 million dollars. So our property taxes don't even cover police, fire, police and fire, which, which they should. And, and this Council should be very proud, they're very responsible, and they've been very conservative, and they watch what they spend, and they have throughout the years. And it shows, if you break out the tax break between the county, the school, and the city, it, it does show that. And so, you know, I, just on, on those terms alone of, of the percentages that we're not even covering, the police and fire with, with the, the property tax, I, I just can't get myself to vote it down, knowing that we're still subsidizing the police and fire through, through the sales tax. You know, that's just one thought process that I have. With that, I'll, I'll open it back up, and I think I'll recognize Alderman and Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. McQuaid. I respectfully don't understand your position, but if you go back to the, the formation of Rapid City, one of their, Rapid City's original missions for the city, or visions for the city, was to become the retail capital of the region. And the reason for that was simply to create sales tax revenues. And I find it interesting that we make the argument that sales tax don't cover specific things, but yet, we give away TIFs in the tune of a million dollars a year, that with the understanding that it'll generate sales tax revenues. So I think that making that argument is, is out there somewhere, maybe in left field. So without the facts, I'm not gonna take any account, that into account, and I just, I don't understand how we can, that is relative. Currently, the, the ways that we have to fund our city are through sales tax revenues and property tax revenues. And understanding that, I, I believe that, the Council has made a lot of improvements on moving forward on this budget, and I understand, after we finish with these budget talks, we're gonna start in on those creative things, and those creative things that we had talked about earlier, about looking at ways to go deeper inside our budget, and look at, at ways to synergize and make opportunities to, to save more money. There's, there's no necessity to raise the people's property taxes. Better left, I think that I could spend my mon, money better than the collective group of us all together. If the money was left in my pocket, I could spend it accordingly to how I wanna spend it. So I think that, that is another reason that I, I choose not to take the CPI, simply because there's no reason for it, and simply because it's better left in the hands of our constituents, will be better left spent by them. I think that they would find a better use for it, and it's a proven, the more money they have, the more money they're gonna spend, but it's their choices that they make in spending them. If we create and we continue to grow our government, we will continue to have a necessity to have more taxes, and, and have to have a, a higher tax base or whatever. But it is also important to understand the premise of the taxes that we do have, and there's some, there's other reasons that we haven't sold liquor licenses, that I don't know if any of people have looked into, but that's a whole nother topic that we can take up after this budget period's over, but there's, there's reasons for that, if, if people see the stipulations that have been put on them, and those types of things. So when we talk about creativity, I would like to hope to add those types of discussions, you know, leaving the money into the taxpayers' hands. I'm not real interested in hearing, again, this is the way it's always been done, I'm not interested in hearing that. I'm not interested, again, in hearing this cumulative effect of money lost, because that is also the same equal cumulative effect of money the taxpayers will have to pay, year after year after year. So understanding that, that's a little bit more of my input into this situation, and I hope that when we draw these parallels with sales tax revenues and property tax revenues, that we understand those are the two biggest vehicles that we have to fund our general funds. And we have also said in the past, we're willing to suffice some of our property taxes to, to create more sales tax revenues. So we gotta keep that in the, in the back of our minds. We got a charge card that's out there, starting to come due now, and we're feeling a little bit of that, but not to the point where we need to raise the property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyfenbach. Next, I'll recognize Finance Officer Jim Preston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Wyfenbach don't wanna hear me say this, but Ms. Hagcock did say, referenced that the one-time loss of the CPI are 369,000. I just wanna make sure that, I guess I go on record, or do advise you of this, that that is an ongoing 369,000 dollar loss, 'cause you never get that tax base back again. And I just wanna make sure you understand that, and that's the only thing I wanted to point out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else for discussion? I recognize Alderman and Ron Wyfenbach.
I wanna also point out the same fact on the opposite end. If you added, it's something that's continually added to, the taxpayers have to continually pay year after year. It's the same as it is, if it's a loss, it's the same thing on, on the gain side of the taxpayers, they continue to pay that every year. It doesn't go away either. They don't just pay it one year, they pay it every year. Okay? There's an increase in our property taxes that continually is paid by the taxpayer year after year after year. So if we look back on budgets in the 14 years, we wanna take, for some reason, the four-year projection and say we lose a million two dollars, well, the same thing goes to those taxpayers, they pay a million two dollars. It, it works both ways. So I'm hoping that as we have these arguments, and we have neutral parties that interject into these arguments, that they argue both sides, that they point out both sides of, of what we're talking about, so we don't end up with a one-sided argument that spins me out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyfenbach. I, I will make the comment that, you know, at August 31st meeting, we did take the CPI and put it in designated fund, and on September 1st, the discussions that we had was that, and it seemed out of the box for this Council, to sit back and say, whoa, whoa, we're gonna wait a minute. We're gonna take the, take the CPI, but we're gonna wait and see where the sales tax comes in at, see what, sort through what's important for this Council, and decide at a later date what it's gonna be used for, if it's gonna be used. As Mr. Chapman just elegantly put, we could also do something creative if, if we decide not to use it. And so I thought that was unparalleled for the Council to make that, that move, 'cause that's the first time I've seen that, and I think the Council's being very cautious. I just wanted to relay on how I felt those meetings went and, and so forth. The motion on the floor is to not take the CPI. Any further discussion, I'll recognize Alderman, Ron Kroger.
Thank you. During, during these budget sessions, we've had a lot of discussion about balanced budgets, zero-growth budgets, you know, sales tax revenue down, and all these kinds of things. And the bottom line is, we all know the sales tax revenue is down. Alderman Hagcock talked about shortages we have in some of our line items for our budget coming up. You know, it makes no sense to me not to take the CPI, and the reason it doesn't make any sense to me not to take the CPI is, yes, we have a balanced budget, but we're balancing that budget on our reserve funds. If we were not going into our reserve funds to balance a budget, then it might be more logical to me not to take the CPI. But we're going into our reserves to balance this budget by 2 million dollars. 1.9 million dollars. Undesignated reserves are both the same thing. What's the difference?
I recognize Jim Preston.
If, if I could, the Council a number of years ago wanted to set aside a reserve, and that was 15% of projected revenue, and so that's about 6 and 1/2 million dollars on your cash, cash balance sheet, we always show that, set that aside, and take that off. The undesignated cash are essentially funds that were not committed to the previous budget, and so we're using 1.9 of that undesignated cash to balance this budget. That's, essentially, that's funds that we can get back from previous budgets, et cetera, that we haven't passed. Projected, thank you very much.
But the end result, Jim, is it's still, those dollars come out of our reserve fund to begin with, and really, they're, they're part of the reserve. Until we change the policy, those dollars that come back at the end of the year, would have went back into the reserve fund. I mean, it's a savings account, all it is, it's a reserve fund. And then, like you said, until we can balance a budget without using undesignated funds or reserve funds, to me, it is not logical. Hoping that sales tax, I mean, we've all been sitting here talking about doom and gloom and sales tax dollar being down, and we need to be cognizant of that and, and watch our budget, and then we turn around and say, oh, you know, one hand, we need to watch that, but the other hand, you know, heck, we don't have to worry about... you know, one hand, we need to watch that, but the other hand, yeah, heck, we don't have to worry about, you know, our budget. We could, you know, we've never had to dip into this before. Chances are we won't have to do that again. I'm I'm not, I'm not going to base my budget analysis on on that this year. Years past, you know, we've always, we've always basically grown. This year, I mean, it shows that we're not growing. So I'm not in favor of the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. I recognize Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would think it would be appropriate for an interjection from our finance department to explain to explain to designated funds and if we've actually budgeted into those designated funds in the past, this is a common thing or not a common thing. I think it would be, take a good time to explain the difference between designated funds and reserve funds and if we've budgeted last year into the designated fund or the previous year or the previous year.
I recognize Jim Preston, Finance Officer.
Yeah, essentially answer your last question first. We've always used undesigned cash really since I've been here to balance the budget and that's essentially because we do anticipate some funds coming back and we try to to anticipate that on your cash balance sheet. You'll you'll see that figure and we try to anticipate that and use that essentially because based on our budget, we know that the revenue that we're projecting is not going to cover those expenses, but we do know we're going to get some funds back. That's why we use the undesigned cash. As I explained before, you want to know the difference, the reserve fund, again, is the fifteen percent of the revenue that we do set aside. The council directed that to be set aside as a reserve. And then the undesigned cash is essentially that funds that are not specifically identified for anything except we have to use use a portion of those to, well, essentially use those to balance our our budget out. And I guess I'll look to Pauline if you have a different explanation of that.
Mr. Chair, I still have the floor, correct?
I don't know. He's not done yet.
She just pointed out that that if if we've got, essentially if we have eight million dollars, we six of it is reserved, then the difference there is the undesigned cash, which would be the two million.
And last year, we, how much did we budget into the undesigned cash?
Last year, you mean two thousand nine?
Yeah. Two thousand nine, because we're talking about two thousand ten.
The two thousand nine, one point seven.
And this year it's one point nine?
Yes, sir.
So it's, nothing's changed.
Not a whole lot.
Malcolm, did you have? No. I recognize
I was just going to
Mr. Chapman.
I'm probably going to muddy the waters, but I was just just trying to explain my understanding of the difference between reserve and unencumbered or undesigned. And my simple definition that I keep with me is that the council years ago said said fifteen percent will be reserved. That's fifteen percent of revenue projection. The unencumbered or undesigned is at the end of the year, what's still remaining, that's coming back that we didn't use for projects or programs throughout the year, and that's money that we think will be returned back from departments to, and looking from a historical standpoint, I think the finance office can project forward what they, based on historical usage of what we can, what they feel comfortable will come back. This started off at two point four. The motion that Ron made to add the CPI and add it to the undesigned, then reduce that to two point one. And what Ron is saying is that we're still balancing this budget on what we think might come back in at the end of the year. And I think that's what he says he feels uncomfortable about. That if that number was zero, then okay, understood. So that's my understanding.
Mr. Preston?
If I could, we just do another cash balance CPI and maybe that would help explain, thank you, help explain the difference. And if I could maybe walk you through that one more time. Okay, if I, typically every year we look at the May thirty-first, what we have for cash in the bank and the general fund. That was nine point eight million dollars. That's a top figure. Then, as we've talked about before, we do have some drainage revenues, some historic preservation funds are in there. We have to subtract that out of there. And then we project what our expenditures are for the remainder of the year, and that was the twenty-eight million dollars. And then we estimate the revenue we've got coming in, that's the twenty-five. And then we always have some encumbrances that we have to pay from the previous year, which would have been two thousand eight contracts carried over essentially. That was a six hundred and eighteen thousand. We did add in there, we were projecting a land sale of eight, two hundred thousand dollars and been pointed out that that sale has not taken place yet. And so our estimated, and then we estimate the reversion, we use a five point five percent figure as approximately, that's how it's kind of been over the last several year, from the budget that is not spent. That's what we mean by a reversion. It's, you you always say, well, that's what departments give back to you. Essentially what that is is budget dollars that are not spent. That's because people will leave and it'll take six weeks to fill a position, et cetera. But anyway, that's the funds that are not spent. So I think Mr. Chapman talked about our estimate of our unencumbered cash that we're not using. That's at two point seven. Then we have the eight point seven, which is the balance. We take out what the council's directed us set aside and that's a six million four hundred fifty-seven thousand. And therefore, we had two point two to help fund the budget. And and we've talked this about before, it went from two point two to one point nine million dollars that we need from the undesigned cash to balance the budget. And then that's essentially balanced needed fund to reserve. That negative figure is actually a positive figure. You probably recognize that because that's the CPI, the three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. And so that's a, a, other words, if everything holds the same for two thousand ten, we would put three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars back into the pot of money which we take our reserve out of. Did I lose somebody on that explanation? I see a lot of heads shaking this way, so I think that's a good thing. Thank you. Hopefully that helped.
Thank you. I'll recognize Alderman Deb Hadcock.
So on two thousand nine year to date, what does three million six oh seven six thirty-four mean? On undesigned fund balance? Eight thirty-one oh nine.
On a cash basis, that is what we've used to fund the budget so far. And like I said, we're anticipating getting some revenue back that will reduce that amount.
So explain that to me, what you just said.
Pauline's trying to help me out here, talking to my ear. Essentially, she said if this was the end of the year, that's what we would have used to cover all the expenses if that was the revenue we've got. But essentially, say that August thirty-first, if say if that was the end of the year, we've taken all the revenue that we've collected and we've taken what we spent today, we would have had to dipped into our pot of money, three point six million dollars. That's where we would have been at the end of August. We would have had to. Our expenses exceeded our revenue by that amount. And like I tried to explain before, we do have some property tax funds coming. We do have some sales tax dollars coming in that we anticipate and we'd ever know that that will offset a chunk of that. I don't, did that answer your question?
I'm trying to figure out why you put it in undesigned, you said cash that hasn't come in, but I thought it was this was the year to date of what you had, but you haven't minus all the things that you have to take out of that? Is that what you just said?
No.
I'm not understanding.
Essentially, when we try to do these or an assumption puts these together, she wants to balance out at the end to show, okay, how are we going to cover all our expenditures? That's that, so far today, we spent thirty-four thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Well, how do we cover that? Excuse me, thirty-four million four hundred eight thousand. Small town where I come from, we don't talk millions, we talk thousands. But anyway. Anyway, how do we cover that expenses? We add up all the revenue that we've got. We still need to cover the expenses through August thirty-first, three million six hundred seven thousand dollars. And that's got to come out of your bank account. And and this is just a paper exercise.
Well, just a couple of things. People said if previous doesn't have to do with now and a couple of other things, but actually it does. Because if we have one point nine million and we don't come in and we need two point three or two point two and we have to get in reserves, I understand we'd have to redo reserve cash, but it sounds like from where we're at today and what we need to make up with property tax, sales tax and all our other stuff, we're good to go. And it's like the liquor license and some other things. People have said we we made it up in other places or we can make it up in other places. So I I guess I'm just not getting it. Then why do we have to take that? Because we've done it for years and it's inflation and some other things. And and to me, I guess if you're tightening your budget and you want to make a difference, that's where you'd start. You would say a four hundred thousand dollars or three seventy-seven would make a difference. I guess in my budget, if I had to tighten it, that's what I'd do is in the CPI, because you know what? It, that's where it'd help the taxpayers the most if I had to do it. That's what we're about. And again, I'll keep saying this. City raised it in contributions for water, sewer and some other things. School's going to have to end up raising their taxes to pay for their new additions and their things that they're coming to pass with. County has to raise it to balance their budget. I believe in my heart, we can balance this budget without this four hundred thousand and make it fiscally responsible and do something different that we haven't done before. And in order to show that we do not have to take this and in the future, it will affect them, but it will affect them in a positive way. And in city, will it affect us that much? I don't think so. I think with four hundred thousand dollars, I've seen land sales, I've seen things that we haven't bought. That's one land sale that we don't get this year. Can we do that? I think so. If we're talking about just the inflation rates and different stuff in order to grow or what it costs the government in order to take care of itself, I still believe in my heart that this is where we'd do it. If I had a budget and this was my budget, this is where I'd cut it. I believe in my heart, again, if you look at everything that we have raised, it's about fiscal responsibility and this part, I believe in the future will make a difference. Do we have to do it every year? I don't think so for one year. Let's see where we go. Let's see how fiscal we get and how prioritized we get in the future. I think this makes a a message that city doesn't have to follow along and do like county and everybody else is doing. I think we did well. I think this mayor has done well in his budgets. I think this council has done well in its budgets and I don't think we need it.
Thank you, Ms. Hadcock. I'll go to Alderman Ron, our Ron Kroger.
Say, Jim, going back to this, the thirty-four million, everything that we've got today and and what it would end it. So basically, what what these numbers are telling us today is we would have used the three point six million. And we had projected that we'd only use one point seven. So so we've spent an additional two million dollars that we did not think that we would have to do if we use those numbers today. So we all know that sales tax, sales tax, sales are down in in South Dakota. We all know that. The governor says that all the time. Sales tax revenue is down. So we know that we're not going to be jumping up. We're going to be going down. So if if based on, if we ended this today or August thirty-first, if we ended it on August thirty-first, we would be, we would have expended two million dollars more than what we projected last year for our budget out of the undesigned reserves. So not to take, in my mind, it what really bothers my mind is the last few years, and it's not trivial, believe me, I'm not saying that. But we get stuck on this three percent CPI for the last few years. When we collect over twelve million dollars in property taxes from people, that's no big deal. It's not, no big deal that we collect over twelve million dollars for from the people of Rapid City in property taxes. We always get stuck in a lousy. Don't quote me on this. Emily? It's not a loud, a lousy three hundred sixty thousand dollars, but the percentage is so small that we bought a battle on every year. It just amazes me sometimes we have a discussion. I I don't, you know, what, that's what bothers me is we always, we we always work on this CPI, the three percent CPI. Why do we always take the three percent CPI? Why do we always focus on that? If we really want to do our job, let's focus on the twelve million that we're collecting in property taxes for people. Let's pull, instead of pulling out the three percent CPI, let's pull out the whole property tax and start working on our budget there to see what we can save people. I mean, that makes more sense to me than than working on the three percent CPI. I I don't know why we always, why we always pull this three percent CPI out. I really don't. Not, and especially this year, when all our, all indications are is we're going to be lower than we've been in the last fifteen years for collection of sales tax revenue. Why we would just throw that off the side and not even be worried about that because we're going to worry about a three percent CPI? Yeah, twelve percent or twelve dollars a month or whatever it is on a hundred fifty thousand dollar, a year on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, you can say is not a lot, but it is a lot to a lot of people. But, you know, we just raised our water and sewer this past year a large amount. And not one person made a big issue out of it on this council. You know, we talked about drainage fees in this budget. We need to do that. That's no big deal. You know, I tell you what, I'll take a three, I'd take a six percent CPI this year and not have had to pay the water and sewer increase that I paid. So, you know, we get stuck on issues that sound good. But on one hand, I'm going, wow, where were we when we were raising this here? Never heard a word. CPI, then it makes it comes a big issue. With that, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bank on us being as of today, we're two million dollars more into our designated reserve funds than we projected we would be if it ended this year. And I'm not going to, I I'm not going to vote and say that, ah, you know, all the indications are that it's going to get worse. I believe those. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote against that and say, let's take out the CPI this year. I, there's, to me, that's irresponsible. Thank you.
Next, I'll recognize Alderman Bill Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I find this discussion very interesting. And I I remember discussions fairly similar to this in previous council sessions when I was on prior. I'm going, I'm going to take a different approach. Now, I'm hearing, I'm hearing terms like I don't want to grow government. Fiscal responsibility. You know, we live in a really, really great city and people love the parks and they love their neighborhoods and they like the recreation. They like the arts. I mean, we have a, we have a very diverse pie in Rapid City. And we talk about the street conditions or we talk about needing new water. And we talk about CPI. And we talk about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We talk about not, not having enough people to move the parks in Rapid City. I'll tell you, I'm in favor of taking the CPI for different reasons. The one being is when constituents talk to me, they don't like to have their taxes raised. But in the same breath, they want their streets fixed. They want their parks mowed. They want to be able to go to the civic center and do all these things. And all we're doing is we're cutting services. And yeah, if we bank this, that's fine. And then if we need it at a future date or if we do something like Mr. Chapman came up, I'm in favor of that also. But we talk about the quality of life in Rapid City and then we we sit here and argue for an hour whether we, whether we should take a three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar property tax increase. Those are my comments and I will not be supporting the motion to not take the CPI. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Next, I'll recognize Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't argue any comments that either person made. I think they made a good argument for for not taking the CPI and the fact of the matter is that you have to start somewhere on whatever you want to call it and on on responsibility. it, on responsibility and making sure that costs are controlled and those types of things. I totally agree with the fact that we need to start looking at deep depth inside of our budget, period. And I think that we have the plan to do that. It's taken two years of conversations with people on this, on this council to get it done. It's getting done. I think this is a step in the right direction to not take the CPI. It sends a message. It sends a message of fiscal responsibility. I don't care what anybody wants to make of it. Yeah, we did raise water rates and sewer rates because we had a huge necessity to do it. We today do not have a huge necessity to take a tax increase. It's already, there's already an increase in the, in the sales, in the property tax revenue from growth that provided some, a 5%. By adding another 3, it takes it to 9. So I think that, you know, I think that both my colleagues made good arguments for the fact that we don't need to take it. It's a small amount of money, but it sends a heck of a message to our constituents to say that we are moving in the direction to be fiscally responsible with their money. It's not my money, it's theirs. Part of it may be mine. I suppose I paid about, I'm just doing the numbers. I paid about $10,000 in property taxes last year, and I'm sure that there's a lot of people that probably paid a lot more than that. And unfortunately, there's the people that live in my rentals that are going to pay more next year if it continues to keep this type of movement towards saying that we need more services. We're not cutting services. I, since I've been here, almost three, I'll be going on two and a half years, I haven't seen one service cut. Is there room for improvement? Yeah, there is always. There's a room for improvement in, in any, in any arena. In my budget, I'd like to have a bigger house, but I can't just go out and tell my neighbors, you're going to pay for my new house because I want to live in a bigger house and spend more money. It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And I think that there is some steps in place to look at the $12 million. Not only specifically look at that, but look at inside the budget. I think that we've got a council in place right now and some leadership in place that has an understanding of what we've been talking about for two years, and we're starting to move in the right direction. And that's why I continue to beat on this $369,000. And anybody here can discount in any way, shape, or manner that they want, but it still becomes an increase to the taxpayers, which is multiplied every time it's added. It's added to the increases of the water sewer rates, which were a necessity, they had to be done. Sure, it would be irresponsible for, irresponsible for the council not to, not to continually take the CPI over a period of time. You could see the results of what would happen with that. But I'm talking about a one-time deal, looking at it going, we don't need it. There's other, there's other room in our budget, and everyone knows it. They just won't say it. And what we have in place after this meeting is over, with this prior count, this council that's in place right now and the city council leadership here, we are going to start our next year's budget soon after this budget starts. And I hope that we have those serious talks and, excuse me, look inside these budgets and look for opportunities to synergize our departments. There's a lot of things out there that I'm not willing to talk about today, that there's opportunity, room for opportunity where waste is being, as we speak, being generated. And there's opportunity for improvement, and we will get there. It's going to take a little bit of time. This sends a clear message to our constituents that we're on their side, and we're going to help them by not adding another burden to their taxes. Because the water and sewer, those were huge increases, and I'll show anybody my five water bills if they don't believe me, how much it adds up real fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wypenbach. Next, I'll recognize Alderman, Deb Haggock.
I just think it's funny that people call this $400,000 or $3.77 a small amount of money, but we always forget, we have a team of people in this city that raise taxes, not just city council. And we forgot the other part of the teams are raising theirs, which makes that amount a lot more money for people. We were just already a part of that again, and it's funny that we, we say it's a small amount of money, but if we take it now, like Malcolm says, we can do a plan to give it back. But I, I believe in my heart that that's not a clear message is what we want to send. If we feel at this point, and I think we have balanced this budget, and I think we have done it in the past very, very well, and I've seen in government that if we spent more on necessity and not wish lists, that small amount of money isn't really going to make the difference of taking it either. So based on necessity and priority, we have four months left. If you take this, you can give it back, like Malcolm said, or we can learn to live with what we have, like most people do, and balance the budget like the mayor has done correctly, and move ahead. I think, again, if you look at prior years, this might be a bad year, but I still believe you won't go into reserves. I believe at this point, with sales tax and everything else, this council will be fine for 2010. I've always based my priorities and my necessities on my business and made it through pretty easy. This government, I think, can do the same. We call it a small amount of money, but I keep telling you guys, add up the team of people that would be adding to the tax base besides those contributions of water, sewer, and garbage. Then tell me if it hurts people in Rapid City to add our $11 or $14. And for me, this isn't a pitch for political reasons, this is a pitch for the people. We're not doing this because, just because it's fiscal responsibility. It makes sense. It makes sense if we can get by, let's get by. Everybody else has to. Why doesn't this, why doesn't this city? I think even in, that being said, we have a zero-growth budget. He's done it for us, the mayor, for two years. This will be the second year, or a third year, if I'm correct, two in the past. I think we could find it in this budget if we needed $400,000 as a necessity because we were short. I don't think we're going to dip into reserves. I think we'll find something that, ah, is not a necessity in this budget and get by in 2010. We'll be like everybody else, and I think these people on this council are smart enough and this mayor to figure out how to make it up without having to add one more piece of the puzzle, which is part of the team, again, that's adding to the issues of the city and the taxpayers' base.
Thank you, Ms. Haggock. Motion on the floor is, is not to take the CPI. Any further discussion? I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And maybe not tonight, but before we approve the final budget, I'd like for our city attorney to at least, I'm not sure if we can even do what I asked us to do or what I threw on the floor. I'm not sure if we have the legal authority to do it. But I'd like to hear, not tonight, but at some point before we, before we finalize the budget, that idea. I'd like to hear some thoughts about it.
I'll recognize City Attorney Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to provide you with some information on that. I can't do it tonight, though.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to deny the CPI. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? In a case of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The same? Aye. Amber, can we have a roll call, please?
What?
No.
Martinson? Quaker?
Aye.
Clarification. Aye is for it?
Yeah. Can we get a clarification is if you, if you vote aye, that means that you're taking the CPI out of the budget. If you vote no, you're going to leave it in the budget. That's the clarification. So we'll, we'll start all over again. Amber, could you start again, please?
What?
No.
Martinson? Quaker? Costello?
Aye.
McCroy?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Wilson? Oh, sorry. Wypenbach?
Aye.
Kroger? Haggock?
Aye.
That is 6 to 3.
6 to 3 vote, CPI gets taken out of the budget.
We need to take a five-minute recess.
We're moved and seconded to take a five-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Not really. Watch what that does to you.
No.
Did you get enough pizza, Ron?
Yeah, I did.
Good. See, we're not, we're not growing. We need to be catching up. When your city attorney doesn't have enough staff to review ordinance, when you haven't, don't have enough parks people to mow the grass you have, and we continue to build and build more streets, and then you, yeah, it's a pitiful amount. But boy, five years from now, that baby will come back on.
Yeah, we're talking $12 million. They have four years. That's one point. One, we're going to lose some budget. So if we have to pay for this all the time, we can all ourselves take it, or profit tax it, and we have it. It would still be the same size. So required all the services.
It's close.
Especially if it was 3% was nearly 3% what it was going to have to be taxed. That's one thing, but it doesn't become close to 3% at the end of that.
Well, it'll be, based on, I heard tonight, it'll be out of the ordinance.
Too much.
Yeah. I mean, I disagree with a lot of what they said. I've got a lot of complaints. I think it's a minimal. But I'm surprised, I didn't, I don't see how, what I put on the floor, or what I asked for this stuff, I don't see how that hurts, um, hurts those that have to take administrative. I mean, I understand that. But we get to that point of adding to the base. It's the same time getting rid of it. I've got a lot of complaints. Everybody, every single entity is asking for work, and nobody, no one is saying, where do I get work? No one has given me a work. And I totally, I mean, I, I buy what I'm saying. I mean, if we're going to ever pick up, this is, this is, I'm designated, I'm going to go back, we won't be setting that. But that is too many, man. 2.4, I mean, I understand that. Nobody's giving me a work. So frankly, this is what I think. She's gone. She won't be back.
So I get a proxy vote.
Since we don't care, I'm going to make a motion, Nathan, give us a city attorney and three parks employees. Who else we need? No big deal.
Yeah, it's counting. We need somebody down to finance.
What's in there on this? That number we got here? I think we could go into a reserve and fund more employees. You're going to get a setup, good thing you're Rosie out there. Who said that?
Oh, I, I, I mean, I, or it's, it's like, the most.
You know, we're, we're way from lots of talks on property taxes. You know, when I think about, I'm asking really, I think with fire potential, I think with potential, Mr. David, my friend, it's like a microphone. I don't even think for that. So, yeah, property taxes are high, but we're not quite to the number.
Ron, Tracy says about $13,000.
Your salary?
Yeah, $13,000 a year.
Bill?
Yeah.
$13,000.
What?
Salary.
Yeah. Not 20. I feel better. I have an article, uh, from the random, the highest paid council in the state.
Yes, their council was the highest paid council in the state. And we were like, oh.
Well, I know, but now that...
I would take 6.5 now. I mean, I didn't, I voted suitably. Not personally, but they buy, I, I, that position.
I'm going to make that motion tonight.
Maybe I should have pushed harder. That's a model, that's a all-time, I don't make it up. Full perception.
The whole budget session, she was arguing for drainage fees. We need to collect the drainage fees because we got to, we got to hire an employee.
But I mean, I just, all this year, this time, if somebody, I can say, no, no. I disagree with her. I disagree with her.
I, yeah, I don't know, she's something a little over the top. Yeah, I mean, I, she is, uh, my was pretty simple, for me it was pretty simple.
Go ahead, turn red. We done now? A budget? Fund those for council contingent, sand, friggin' heck among development, I already told you that. You said, we'll wait and see. Let's wait and see. We have money in there. We grew up, we should have parked, put those in place. We're deciding to do friggin' two hundred more acres of park. Nobody wanted them the other day, they wanted to find it from the...
This guy, do it, we gonna find it.
Maybe we just wait for the...
Okay.
Christmas tree, direct direction, we're gonna fish here.
So it's low.
You better find someone to put up Christmas decorations.
Shit, who actually did them last year?
I'm pulling my stuff, there ain't no sense talking about them.
You know who did a lot of them? They, they put up the, uh, what they did every year, I'm sorry.
You got a point.
And then the fire department put up the trees downtown, and then, and then lawn had a freakout, and then I got volunteers. I didn't say they didn't do squad.
That's what you just said.
No, I said we did some. What they do last year? Okay. I didn't say that you did, I didn't say they didn't do squad. I said we did a lot.
Who did a lot?
We did the trees, West Boulevard and me did the trees. The fire department did the trees downtown. They did like they always do, they put up the banners, they put up the...
All right.
Who got all the Christmas?
All right, folks, we have a motion to come out of break.
How much did they pay last year?
Removed and seconded to come out of break. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor say aye. We're out. Uh, just for clarification, just for clarification for the council, this meeting is, the meeting, uh, the motion that was made to, uh, to remove CPI, this is a recommendation to the body, so at the legal and finance or the city council, uh, the ordinance will have to be amended. Is that, is that wrong?
Talk to Jason, we want to make sure we get this right.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna, I'll recognize city attorney Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item that's noticed on your, um, public notification is, uh, 2010 budget review. It is not second reading of the ordinance, so the ordinance is not actually in front of you tonight. Functionally, what you're doing is making a recommendation to the council tonight.
But now, when do you, gotta make sure they understand, if they want to amend it, when do they have to amend it?
It's gotta be done at the council meeting. This item has been to the council once, so it's inappropriate for a committee to amend this item.
Okay. Does everybody, does anybody have any questions for Jason? I'll, I'll recognize Sam Quaker.
So this motion tonight was a motion of utility, we have to do it all over again?
Well, it's in the form of a recommendation now, from this committee of the whole to, to the council.
This is noticed as a special city council meeting, work session, so that we could make motions on the budget, just like we've run in past years.
In past years, when you've had the work sessions where you've made motions, the item on your agenda has been first or second reading of the budget ordinance.
I assume next round will be going on the second round of, the second approval of the ordinance, and with the amendment that we're to get in tonight.
Okay. I'll, let me recognize, uh, Alderman Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just maybe a recommendation, um, and I understand, and I agree with what you said, Jason, but when this item comes to the council, can we have it in tandem? Can we have it as it is today? And can we have it with the recommended changes that this body is talking about? Because I think that would expedite the process, so at least, if that's the, you know, we could have two versions of the appropriations there, and we are really talking about, no, we don't want to vote on this one, now we're talking, is that a possibility?
I, I think we can do that, yes. So you'd have both, both versions of the ordinance, it would, it would save you the trouble of going through the process of amending, um, the ordinance to get to the same place. You take one vote instead of two.
If we, just the appropriations that's currently, in its current form, if that shows up at the council, which it will, and we vote on that one, then we would have to have another special council meeting before the thirty-first to actually approve, or no?
No, second reading of the ordinance is properly set up for, um, the twenty-first, I believe, so whether you amend it or not, that will be second reading. You've already had first reading.
And we wouldn't have to continue that to a...
No.
A later, I mean, date before the end of the month?
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll recognize Alderman Sam Quaker.
So we, so we have voted, um, like, seven to three, I think it was, to draft an amendment, to draft an amendment for the 2010 appropriation ordinance, and that amendment will be coming forward as a separate line item at the next council meeting.
I think if I heard the discussion, what the request was, was to have two versions of the ordinance that would be linked. One would include the, the amendment that you just discussed, one would be as was approved on first reading. And then the council could take up whichever version you wanted on Monday, the twenty-first.
I'll recognize Mayor Allen Hicks.
Thank you. I think what'll happen Monday night is the ordinance will appear as is, but we will have a second copy, so if someone wants to make a substitute motion to adopt, you can either do a by amendment, or you can do a substitute motion to, uh, make a motion to approve what you were talking about tonight. Either way works. You can either amend it, or you can actually adopt, or adopt it as a substitute motion, which, I mean, either way works. You can do it either way.
In order to be...
In order, in order for this to be, if this is now a recommending body tonight, instead of us being able to amend the ordinance, then this was what, what I would call an amendment, and that means it needs to be on the agenda as an amendment, where we are then going to vote up or down on, on that amendment, because otherwise, if we have a, if we have an item on the agenda that has, that has both options, that's not the way a true amendment works. A true amendment would be its, its own number, uh, on the, uh, on the agenda. Otherwise, the vote of this, uh, meaning this body tonight could technically mean nothing. I think that needs to be, we, we made a motion, and that motion should be published on the agenda as a standalone, and as an amendment, uh, that we can then make for second reading.
I'll recognize Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The way that you've handled this in the past, and where this tends to come up is after the council has approved first reading of something, and then the legal and finance committee recommends an alteration, is that you have two ordinances, two documents linked to the item on the agenda. The first one would be as approved on first reading, the second would be as recommended by the legal and finance committee, so that when it gets to the council, the council can take up one or the other without the cumbersome process of having to have a motion for approval, then an amendment, then discussion on the amendment, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the whole motion. You essentially skip that step by simply adopting the version that has been recommended to you by a subcommittee. I, I would envision this working the same way.
So a committee of ten would send an amendment to a committee of five, which might then kill the amendment that the committee of ten voted on, and then the, then the council could then theoretically be denied an up or down vote on what we have collectively done tonight?
No, that's not right at all.
No. Okay, I want to make sure that there isn't some sort of a game being played to prevent, to prevent this from happening.
No, this is, this is, this body is effectively another recommending body to the council, just like your legal and finance committee, and just like your public works committee. So what, the way I see this working is that you will take this to the council, or the council's vote, as you have, um, voted on tonight, and as you may further vote for, for changes. What you will have in front of you at the council meeting is the ordinance approved on first reading, and the ordinance as amended tonight. The council can take up whichever version you want, you will have the opportunity to amend whichever version you want, or approve it as is.
I'll recognize Mayor Allen.
There again, I, I don't want anybody to be surprised here. What's gonna appear on the agenda will be the same as what was approved in first reading. At the city council meeting, you will, you will have the ability, and you will actually have a copy of an ordinance that you talked about tonight, and you will have the ability to approve that. But what will appear on the agenda will be the ordinance as approved by first reading. I mean, there, there can't, you can't have two ordinances, and, help me out, Jason, you can't have a standalone amendment because it's not an actual motion by itself. So you can't place that on the agenda.
The, the way I would see this working, Mayor, is that there would be two versions of the ordinance linked. So when you click on the item number for the ordinance, you would have the version as approved on first reading, or the version as approved by the council as a whole, as recommended, yes.
I'll recognize Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Jason, as you explained, I think there's been a couple of things that have come through the council in the last year that have had that same thing. You link to the item, and there are, are two versions of the ordinance up there. Just so I can be clear, will that, will this be second reading, then?
Yes, either way, it's second reading, the title is not gonna change. All you're doing is changing the content.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize Alderman Deb Haggard.
I thought, so what was first reading? Isn't first reading what we did in a work session that it was motion by Kroger, second by Haggard, brought forward as a first reading? Now we're doing a work session, and we're gonna do a work session with, we talked about all this, to bring it forth in second reading, it seems like the work session's amendment should be put up there, and then if they want to change it back, I think it should be the opposite. Because I think that's kind of how we did it before. Why go through all the process when you had the majority vote on something that...
Let me try this.
I'll, I'll recognize Mayor.
Here's, you've already gone through first reading. The, the first reading, or the adoption of first reading, belongs at the council level. It doesn't belong, and I, I know this sounds funny, it doesn't belong to legal and finance, it does not belong to this subcommittee, it belongs at the council level. It, it is basically theirs to take up. And so, when it gets to the council, you'll have every right to, but to answer your question, Deb, the way it worked on first reading is there was a recommendation to legal and finance, legal and finance approved it, and that recommendation, there again, their recommending body, took it to city council, and the city council took the proper action. That's how first reading was approved, and that's really how we have to handle the second reading. It's, in essence, the same process, with one difference, and that is, at legal and finance, since the, the motion itself belongs at council, and this is what I'm looking at, Jason, they do, they really don't have the ability to amend it at legal and finance. The appropriate place to amend it is at city council, because it belongs to the city council.
That's correct. The legal and finance committee no longer has the authority to amend the ordinance because it belongs to the council. What could happen is that legal and finance could recommend some other amendment, so it's possible you could have three variations of this in front of you on, um, Monday night. But the, the work that you're doing here will be forwarded to the council as a whole for action or inaction or amendment, whatever you'd like to do.
Aaron, did you have a question? I'll recognize Aaron Costello.
I just want to see that I recognize Deb's concern versus what's listed as number one on the agenda, and what's listed as number two, or the main and the amended. And if we were sending this to any other group that wasn't involved in the discussion we just had, that would be a concern, but I hope we're all astute enough to remember what we discussed today, so, thank you.
I'll, I'll just make a comment, you know, even though, even though that's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be two versions, how it's read in is gonna be the, pretty much the choice of chairman of legal and finance, isn't it right? Are they gonna read both of them in?
The motion that will need to be read in is the, a motion, the first reading. Now, as soon as that motion is made, then there can be a substitute motion to offer the whole new ordinance, or you can offer to make an amendment of that and do an effect what you're trying to do. But when it is first read in, it will be identical to that which was read in under first reading. No, you can change it at city council. You can make a recommendation at legal and finance to the city council to change it, but you can't actually change it at legal and finance. You can make a recommendation.
Okay. So, I think, I think I understand now. That's why we're at this work session, because there was an amendment to take CPI, and we decided to have this work session to, to talk a lot, okay. So, no further motion on the floor. I'm gonna remove the two items I added. I had items humane society and detox discussion, but in, in reality, there's no sense of talking about them at this time, so. I'll recognize Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you removing those items, and I, I think that at a later time, as we move on to the, after the budget's been approved, we can revisit those items.
So, there's nothing on the list unless the council has a desire to, to discuss anything? Removed, adjourned, and seconded, any discussion?
I was hoping.
All right, oh, sorry. Let's, let's vote on the motion. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. All opposed, aye. Motion carries with one, or motion fails with nine ayes. Motion failed. Discussion, Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the DRC discussion came up and ended before I had a chance to really peruse the material that was given to us. Where I stand right now, I'm looking at what they, they say. Through, so through June thirtieth, Destiny's Rapid City has requested fifty thousand dollars from the city. Uh, I asked the city finance officer, has any more been withdrawn since then? Pauline is nodding yes. They took the other fifty thousand in July. Well, that is, huh, that's interesting, they left that off there. So they have withdrawn the whole one hundred thousand that we, okay.
I, I think I can answer the question. If you actually look at, the reason for that is the report that you see, is there a fiscal year which ended June thirtieth? And so all the reports they have, including their audit, is through July thirtieth, so that's probably why they're referring to the July thirtieth date.
Fair enough.
Or Ju, I'm sorry, June thirtieth date.
Okay, so, then I'll just stick through, uh, through June thirtieth. They have spent a total of, uh, five thousand five hundred dollars, having withdrawn the entire fifty thousand. So, I'm just curious, you know, we're talking about where, where we can maybe save, where we can pinch pennies, where we can, can trim our budget. Some of these things, uh, I guess pedestrian, traffic light signals, signs for downtown parking, I just, I'm curious, I think we should all keep in mind, and, and maybe we'll have Mr. Brewer come back with some more discussion on, uh, as Sam requested, like, what are the, uh, the salaries and some of their other expenses? I mean, it's just through my personal experience dealing with Destiny's Rapid City, that I'm, I'm not sure how much they're giving back to the community right now. It seems that they're, lots of times, it's kind of focused on a narrow group. So, I think it behooves us to, to make sure that this money that we've appropriated is being spent wisely, and is being sprint, spent with the majority of downtown in mind, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Any further discussion? Motion's been made to adjourn by Haggard, seconded by Weifenbach. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.